Eric James McGinnis.
Here.
Bob McCool. Craig Prestissager.
Here.
Michelle Ripmester.
Here.
Tom Ricker.
Here.
Assistant Town Manager Matt Maglin.
Here.
Town Planner Fred Fox. Attorney Carissa Echol.
Okay, thanks. Moving on to item three, public comment on consent agenda and non-agenda items. This is your opportunity to speak to the commission on items both on the consent agenda and items not on the agenda. If anyone would like to come forward.
George Tucker, 109 South Fourth. I have a question. Is this where I ask a question about the ambulance services? What the fire district is trying to improve for our district? Or do I wait till the fire?
I suppose you could ask it now because I don't know that it necessarily affects...
Well, it's probably involved with the building.
If it's part of the building discussion, I would say.
I'll wait and see.
We'd need to wait, I think.
Yeah.
Okay. Seeing no other comments from the public, we'll move on to item four, the consent agenda, approval of the January 5th, 2010 minutes. Actually, I just want one comment on the minutes. Let me pull them out here. It just said, sort of partway down through the public, after the public comments, that I stated I would like to see proposals of property purchased by the town brought before the planning commission in the future. I think I also made the point that I understood that real estate negotiations are often sensitive and that you may lose your leverage if you bring it out in the public that you're negotiating for real estate. So, not significant point of clarification. Okay? Beyond that, I don't have any other changes, so if we want to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner McGinnis. Second by Ripmester. Any discussion? None? All approved? I mean, all in favor? I think it's unanimous. Thank you. Sorry. Cat's got my tongue today. Okay. That's item four, the agenda. Moving on to item five, new business, the public hearing for Rocky Mountain Fire District's final flat site plan. So, we will get started. Is there approval for publication?
Did you open?
Oh, no, I haven't officially opened the public hearing. Okay, now we've officially opened the public hearing. My fault. Is there approval for publication? What's that?
This is for an amendment to their final plan.
Yeah, I just read what was on the agenda, so... But it is an amendment. You are right. It's an amendment to the final site plan, right? Okay?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Let's see. Item three, does the applicant have a presentation?
Yes, please.
Okay.
I'm Eric Becker. I'm here from Oz Architecture, representing Rocky Mountain Fire for their renovation in addition to station number five.
Will you state the address of the business as well?
It is...
No, of your business, sorry.
Oh.
Who are you representing?
Oh, Oz Architecture.
And the address?
1805 29th Street.
Thank you.
Boulder, Colorado. Can these let's...
Uh huh.
So, what we're proposing here is, in addition to renovation to existing station number five, I'll run through the brief site improvements first and then the proposed building program. We're starting off, we're adding a parking area here on the site. We're removing some parking spaces along this side and bringing them into this parking area to help clean up circulation for the fire apparatus and eliminate some parking conflicts. Overall, a lot of the site drives are remaining and will be reused, so, and we're improving site lighting and some entry elements on the building. Overall, from a program standpoint, we're increasing the apparatus bays. We're adding two double-deep apparatus bays on the station along with an area of support spaces that are along this back and the mid portion of the station. And living quarters, a day room, kitchen, training room, training slash community room are located in this back part on the fourth floor or first floor. And on a second floor, we have a training fitness room and additional four bunk rooms and bathrooms for the firefighters. The existing building is about 5,930 square feet. The proposed addition is 10,450 square feet, and our total gross building footprint or gross square footage on the site is about 6,380 square feet. Along with other site improvements, we are adding landscaping buffer to the parking areas and the drives and certain portions of the building from the adjacent properties. We're also, in an attempt to reduce the impact of the apron, we're providing a fair amount of landscaping and buffering along this side and some elements in the mid part of the neighborhood as well. In addition to the living quarters and the apparatus space, there's a training tower element here, which is a four-story element with a hip roof feature on it. On the first floor plan, there's more details as I just talked about. The existing building footprint is this area right here, and obviously, the addition for the living quarters, a dedicated firefighter entry, oven toilets, and the training room and kitchen, they're all located in this back section. The existing sheriff's office is located up here. That remains unchanged. Most of this footprint in here all remains unchanged. It will be renovated for finish, so... The additional office space, there's an additional office that's been located in the back part of the existing building. From an apparatus standpoint, the new bays are located in this region, and then there's a support space and the training tower element right here. The firefighter display area is a small display area for, actually, for the hose pump card, same as the card out here. It's in there. Obviously, I'm correct. In addition to just firefighter apparatus, there's going to be a small, what we call children's education area in the program for education of bike safety, fire safety, you know, that type of thing, which is a nice feature there. The other addition here is we're improving the front entry of the building as well for security and for weather features. The second floor, again, the existing building in here remains unchanged, except for an addition or revision to this bedroom for hallway to access the four new bedrooms and two bathrooms. We have a study and a workout room in the back. There is, you will see, you know, this is details, but we are doing some reconfiguration to the stair or to the closets to make them a little more functional. This is all open to the apparatus bay below. There's actually a storage mezzanine in this portion, and that's the second floor of the training tower. This is our variance setback diagram. I can reference this if you have questions later. I just included it to point out the required setback based on our height variance request. So, you can see that this portion of the building is what we're requesting the variance for. The increased front setback due to the height of the tower, we have an area here where we're in conflict, and the front porch rescue entry that we want to add is in conflict with the increase. This is the existing, and that is the proposed required setback with the height variance. This is an actual perspective that we've taken through our modeling programs. We can generate some fairly realistic views. This is actually taken at an average five foot six high from the sidewalk across the street, across Indiana Street, looking at the display area right here, the two new apparatus bays, and the existing building here. We are replacing the two small gable roofs with a single gable roof to bring the architecture a little bit closer to matching, and you can see this is part of the hip roof for the tower beyond. This is some photographs of the existing views. You can see the addition. One addition will occur in this area. The apparatus bay addition will happen on this side. And I'll go back and forth a little bit. These are, again, generated as real perspectives taken from real site photos, and we built, you know, our models that we do, we built and placed under the site so you can get a realistic view of the proposed building versus the existing. The existing building comes right about this zone, and this is the proposed addition of the living quarters in the back. This is the training and exercise room. We also think that room will be used occasionally by the community, so we call it the training community room in the program. Again, this is the existing, then new proposed apparatus bay and display area. And this is a view just taken from the other side. So, I'll look back again so you can see a little bit what we're talking about here as far as the proposed addition. We've worked pretty hard to match the existing building, the architecture, and try to stay within the character of the neighborhood while still making this building, you know, be perceived as a fire station. We don't want it to stand out, but we want it to be recognizable as a place of refuge or, you know, in an emergency, a place, you know, that people will see and be able to, you know, get to. That's it. If there's any questions, I can go back to the images.
Okay. Any questions of the applicant?
I have a question. And it's probably in here, and I just didn't see it, but the increase on the hip roof, what is the purpose of that?
We designed it with a hip roof partially to try to stay within the character or the binocular of the neighborhood rather than putting a flat roof on the building or on the training tower.
So, it's just architectural?
It's architectural. We could build it with a flat roof and actually be within the height restrictions, but we felt that this actually softened the look of the train tower rather than having this just be capped off with a flat slab, in which case, you know, that would actually become an activated platform that could be used for training.
Could you give me the square footages again for existing versus proposed?
Sure. The existing is 5,933 square feet. The proposed is about 10,450 square feet. So, the total gross square footage is about 16,380 square feet. Plus or minus?
Okay.
Okay.
Did you do a measurement from the closest proposed, because it's not built yet, Calmonte townhome building, to the corner of this building that's in the, within the setback?
No, we did not.
No. No, we didn't. I'm going to go ahead and do it.
I'm sorry. You'll have to come to the microphone, sorry, if you're going to respond.
My name is Matt Evans. I'm an engineer with Rexxel Borel. Our address is 1838th Street, Boulder, Colorado. We're the civil engineer for the project, and we tried to do that. We just couldn't find the information. The plans weren't available, and, you know, there's no, as you say, the building's not built, so we can't go out there and measure it. So, we're more than happy to put the information on the plans if you can get the...
I think staff has estimated it. I just want to know if you guys had actually calculated it yet, so...
The north elevation behind the existing looks kind of massive, that two-story kind of vertical space where you have the two-story area. Do you think that's, yeah, you think that's, that midsection beyond that entrance area?
We're talking about this.
It's kind of, yeah, a lot, yeah, it's a lot of wall and not a lot of window or anything.
Yeah. I mean, a lot of that is the driving, a lot of that behind the lock of windows is the fact that these are two bunk rooms and a toilet. So, it's hard to get, based on the planned layout, it's hard to, you know, it's hard to get a window that's in here, you know, on the side of the labs. I mean, we've tried to, we've tried to keep these rooms as efficient as possible to keep the square footage down because we are conscious and aware of the mass. You know, we're still, this is still...
Preliminary?
Yeah. I mean, I don't want to say it's going to change a lot. We've got to be worried about what it may look like, but we are still looking at some, what I would call surface architectural features and character as far as...
Mm-hmm.
You know, maybe we can break this up with some, a change of siding or something like that to help reduce its impact. And again, you know, we will maximize windows of glass in those areas as well.
I'm a little unfamiliar with the actual site itself, but the fire stations that I've participated in the past have always had, like, hose drying racks. Is that something that's not done anymore?
The hoses are all synthetic now, so the need for the hose towers to hang those and dry are not really necessary, though you will, a lot of stations have elements that are vertical like this, and it's kind of a recognition of the old hose drying towers. You know, it's kind of a symbol that's become acquainted with a fire station.
The one elevation, I guess, or the only concern really I have, is that the height of the tower and what it, how it seemed from the neighbors to the east, I think they're the ones who would be most impacted. From the street level, I mean, I think this view, when you had, you showed previously that, of the sketch elevation, showed that how, you know, at street level, it's minimized because of the angle of the roof, but from the folks sitting up on their deck across the street, seeing, A, the, well, they won't see the backside of the building. The Calmonte folks will, but not the, probably, but not the...
From the elevated lots.
I'm talking about the elevated lots off of...
Indiana.
Across Indiana.
Silver.
Silver, silver cord or whatever that is right there, so...
This is a view that's taken, I'll show you on the site, as backup material here to help answer some of your questions, but that view is taken from about, well, taken from about this point on site, and it's a fairly, it's actually skewed a little bit in that it's a wide angle.
Yeah, that's not what I'm talking about, though.
Oh.
I'm talking across the street.
Oh. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, we couldn't model that because we didn't have height, but we are, you know, hiding information on that, but we are aware that, you know, the impact, the impact of the view of this will be a little bit different from basically up here on the hill. You'd be looking at it a little bit more straight on.
But I'd say the Calmonte impacts, say, impacts...
It could be greater.
Could be great.
I'm just thinking of the people who have their, their sort of westerly views and really impede that. I don't know that it does, but we haven't modeled it, so I don't know the answer to my own question, so...
So, that might be a thing to suggest.
Mm-hmm.
Because I tend to agree that's going to wipe out a lot of the...
May or may not.
I mean, and I guess I can go, I can talk a little bit about the program of why the tower, if I have time, why the tower height is as tall as it is. You know, this tower is designed for Durbin training, and it will have a rock climber technical rescue component that will happen on the outside of that wall, as well as confined space rescue and numerous other exercises that she may be able to talk to, to do about in a little more detail. But what we've done is, we've matched the existing floor heights from first to second. The remaining floors, we've kept at an absolute minimum height for structure, considering the fact that there will be firefighters doing drills in here with their protective gear on. So, we've kept those at nine feet floor to floor. And then the roof element, we're actually, we're actually looking at the design of that right now structurally, and we think we may be able to reduce its height by about eight inches from what we currently have until we get into the real details of that. We won't know, but it would still exceed the forty feet. But that being said, you know, what we're doing using this as a functional tower drove the height for the top ceiling plane of that roof. And the only thing that is exceeding that is the actual fact that we added an architectural hip roof to it to try to soften it in the neighborhood. Because I think, we don't have a picture of it, but I think you can imagine what that would look like with a flat concrete slab on it that would be a foot below the variance. I think people would object to that more than this. And I can say, you know, we did look at that option. Rocky Mountain Fire liked that option because that would give them an extra floor to, you know, practice on or use. Right now, this roof, you know, is purely, you know, decorative, so... So, we have looked at trying to keep that tower to a minimum.
Yeah, good evening. Mike Tumbleato, I'm the chief of Rocky Mountain Fire Department, 1581 Bison Drive, Boulder, Colorado. Quickly, just to kind of describe why we have a training tower. Historically, what normally happens or has happened with fire departments is they take a crew out of the fire station, bring a back-in crew so that there's coverage within that community, and we go to, you know, a regional training center to try to get training. We don't have one of those anywhere near us. The closest one we have is in Arbata. Boulder's building, Boulder County's building a couple of them, but they're on the north end of the county, so it's difficult, and it's time, and it's a lot of money. Our industry has recognized that there's a lot of money being spent on putting crews back into the station while other crews go train. So, a lot of fire stations are going to, trying to incorporate training apparatus in their station, and that's kind of what we're doing here. Specific to the height, we're trying to mimic what goes on in the town. Specifically, one of the challenges we have, especially at the Horizons, is the railing on the second floor, which is really the third floor, because you're on the backside of the building and it's a garden level, is thirty-six feet at the railing height. So, we try to practice at that height, and that's primarily why we want that height there, is that top floor gives, mimics that same level that we'll be doing at the Horizons. So, the stairwells and everything else is just typical of what we normally practice in with advancing hoses through those, and then we're going to do a fair amount of rescue training, rappelling and so forth off that tower. And so, height is somewhat needed to try to practice what it is we're going to actually do in the community. So, does that answer questions? Maybe a little bit more?
Does this become, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Does this become a sort of regional training center for you, for Rocky Mountain Fire, then?
It'll be the training center just for the firefighters that are at this station. Other stations could move here to do it, but we're trying to incorporate this element, a very similar training tower at all of our stations so that we can keep the guys at the station and do the training that we need to do there to minimize the cost to the district for backfilling.
Okay.
And then, and that's not all training will happen there, but it gives us a big opportunity to do a lot on scene or at our site, so... That's the only reason we have it.
Okay.
I'd like to hear some further explanation on the overall project and the size increase. I mean, there's a 240 percent...
Yes.
...increase in the overall size and...
I'm glad you asked because, you know, I built this station ten years ago, almost eleven years ago now, and we had to reduce it quite a bit. In fact, most of the elements that we're adding on now were ones that were included in the original scope of the building, but we couldn't afford it. Back in ninety-nine, the environment, the economic environment was expanding quickly, and by the time we started the plans and by the time we got it priced and the contract came out, we couldn't afford to build all of this. But we did have a training room. We did have two extra bays that we put in front of the planning commission at that time, but we ended up not being able to afford it at that time, so we're adding it. Now, the reason for it, though, is, you know, with two bays, we can't keep the ambulance inside, and we can't get our other apparatus that we'd like to have at this station there currently at the station down the street here, and some of it's actually at another station. The ambulance itself sits outside right now. It literally runs all night during the winter because we can't put people in a cold ambulance when we leave the station. So, it either runs or we plug it in and have heaters inside it. So, bringing that equipment inside and having it, you know, obviously, inside a building is a much better way of doing business, so that's the primary reason. Plus, you know, we have more firefighters now than we used to, so, you know, we have four people on an engine, two people on an ambulance, and a battalion chief. That's what's staying at the station right now. Some of that, you know, the battalion chief's vehicle's outside, the ambulance is outside, which can be, just because they don't have water in them like our fire trucks do, they will freeze up, so we have to keep the fire trucks in. So, we want to get all that stuff inside the building, and then we want to have adequate room for the firefighters that are living at this thing. In the beginning, when we first opened this, we had two firefighters and a lieutenant, and that was it. So, you know, we've added twice as many people to the program now, so that's the reason for the expansion, more people and more equipment.
Was the goal always to bring ambulance service?
Yes. You know, up until three years ago, we were part of, and so were all the other fire districts part of, a county-wide ambulance service. And as things changed, mostly economically, that service started to dwindle, and it's continuing to dwindle. In fact, this time next year, it will be in a more county ambulance service. And the rest of the fire district that didn't make this change to incorporating or bringing in the ambulance service in-house are in a bad scramble, trying to figure out what to do right now, just as a side note.
Could you speak up just a bit?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. And so, we knew that was occurring, so we incorporated the fire or the ambulance service within the fire district, so... It was always intended.
Okay.
Now, we're dealing with it.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. I'm sorry. Did you catch everything?
I've had enough. Yes, thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant? Anyone? Okay. Does staff have a presentation?
Yes, I have. Brad gave a presentation, but I'd like to, Carissa, to clarify something that was in the cover memo with regard to the variance request.
Okay.
On page one of the cover memo, it says that the board of trustee also says this is the board of adjustments, and the board of adjustments is responsible for hearing the variance request. Specifically, it says that the planning commission does not render a decision on the variance request, but can render a recommendation to the board regarding the variance requests. The code actually does not provide for planning commission to make a recommendation on the variance request, and the reason for that is because the board of adjustments will be hearing that as a quasi-judicial hearing, and so any recommendation would then bring in information from, from outside of that hearing, I suppose. So, there won't actually be any formal recommendation on the variance made by you all tonight, just to clarify that.
So, we don't, it's not something we should be concerning ourselves with?
As far as the variances, there's no need to make any recommendations. You can take that into consideration... I'm sorry?
Can you take the larger part?
Okay. You can take the variance information into consideration when you're considering the final...
The variance itself or the setback?
Thank you. Final site plan. But the variances will be, whether or not the variance is granted, is it a separate hearing that will be held in front of the board of adjustments?
Okay.
Doesn't it make sense, then, that the variance discussion would have already happened before we get here to approve a plan that requires variances to happen?
Yeah. Do you want to come out?
I don't.
My opinion is, is that planning opinion is no, because you're discussing the site plan, you're discussing the billing... plan, you're discussing the billing, these variances that will be discussed in a separate public hearing are implicitly a part of your discussion anyway. There's nothing wrong with you talking about these things. It's just that
We're not making
you won't make a recommendation to the Board of Trustees. And, so, if, if
Right, but so if we-
you find in terms of your deliberations here that if variances are needed for this particular site plan to, you know, for approval, for example, then it's implicit in that approval you give that you've basically gone along with them. You're okay with that. But, it's not for you to decide, it's for the Board of Adjustment to decide at a separate hearing.
Yeah, and that's fine, except we're looking at a plan that requires variances, and we don't know if the variances have been granted. And so, what do we do? If the variance has not been granted, then we just start all over again, and these guys go back to the drawing board?
No. So, after the planning commission renders a decision, it goes on the consent agenda for the town board. If the town board determines that they want to make changes to the approved final plot site plan per the planning commission, they have to pull it off the consent agenda and schedule it for a public hearing. So, basically, the approval that the planning commission renders tonight will go on the consent agenda. If it stays on the consent agenda as approved by the planning commission, the board will then consider the variance requests at a public hearing following the consent agenda at a final public hearing. If the Board of Adjustments, which is the town board, so it gets a little confusing, but determines that they are not comfortable with the variance request, they will pull the decision of the planning commission off the consent agenda, schedule it for a public hearing, well, they, they will consider both at a future meeting. And it's the way our code procedure is set up, it's a little backwards. As we're going through chapter sixteen, we're looking at fixing that. And the way, we have it in the proposed chapter sixteen, we have no more call-up provision by the board.
Well, so if that's the case, though-
Right.
If there is no call-up provision for the board, then how does it-
Well, as it's proposed.
I understand. But, but, so that creates an even bigger hurdle, because we don't even, look, we're talking about, let's build something that doesn't fit into its allotted box, and we don't know if we can make the box big enough yet. So, why bother talking about whether or not we should build the thing that doesn't fit in the box if we don't know if we can get a big enough box? Doesn't make sense. Makes absolutely no sense to be here having this discussion. Am I, am I, is it just me again?
No, I hear you.
It's probably just me, right? It doesn't, it's me, right?
No, I hear you.
Because I'm not very smart.
There's logical disconnect.
It just, duh, is my thought. But, you know, you get that from me a lot, I know. So, it does, I mean, I, let's do part A first and then do part B.
Well, the, the, I'll get into something else later, never mind. No, you're, you're right.
So, as you would suggest, is the variance requests come before the final flat-site plan amendment application?
Well, how, how could we, if we know that the box is too small, how can we approve a project?
You're actually approving the final flat-site plan as, as it's drawn, or as you might suggest it be different in terms of the actual plan on the site.
But, the only thing we can be right now is reject it.
The issue of variances are part of it, but it's not for you to decide on that, it's just that it is part of the plan.
According to our code, the setbacks are what the setbacks are. If we don't know that there's a variance, the only vote that we can say is no.
Well, you're not, you're not necessarily
It doesn't comply with the code. The project doesn't comply with the code as the code is written, and so the only thing we can do without knowing that the variances are already in place is to say no. Go get the variances and come back.
Or make a qualification.
Or make a qualification.
Right, or, yeah, we can make our-
We can qualify.
Yeah, we can qualify, we can make a recommendation.
We don't get to make a recommendation on the variance.
No, we can, we make a recommendation on the, on the project.
On the project.
You're welcome to come forward, sorry.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I guess what, what we understood the process to be was that if you approved this, it was approved contingent upon the variance being approved.
Right.
I mean, if, if you say, yes, this project looks fine, we realize there is the variance issues, but move forward, you know, that this whole project moving forward then becomes totally, your approval is totally contingent upon them
Correct.
granting us the variance. So, it, I guess in our minds, it actually does make sense, because we, we go through this planning process and present it, and without getting into a, you know, a whole complete set of construction documents and things, we need to kind of find out if the overall project meets your criteria and then meets the specific criteria of-
But, that's what I'm saying. You know, our job is to follow the code and, and apply the project to the code as the code is written. So, without the variance in hand, right? You're asking for something that doesn't comply with the code, and so...
Well, we can-
The planning commission's approval is contingent on the board's consent, whether it stays on consent agenda or not.
Right. Right. And there are other aspects of the project besides the variance to consider, besides the setback issues, right?
Sure.
So, we, we can render decision, we can render approval of those items which are under our purview. I don't know what to tell you.
James, are you worried about the extra ten percent that might be modified to accommodate going back if the variance doesn't get approved? Is that really what you're talking about?
It doesn't make sense to me, the whole, I mean, but, you know, I might be on the wrong planning commission.
No, no.
Every, every, seems like every time I come to a meeting, I think, boy, I must be on the wrong planning commission, because it doesn't make sense. It just doesn't make sense. But, you know, so, anyway, yeah, my concern is duly noted, and we can move on.
Further presentation from staff?
One of the things that spent a little time on, it's really difficult to figure out the parking requirement for this facility, because it's a mixture of many things. It's got a community room, which was a little bit of concern, because the capacity of the room is like forty people. And our code requires that there's one space for every four seats, so that'd be ten spaces just for the community room, and won't. But, the community room is something that, you know, in terms of their, their training explanation and so on, the likelihood of having forty people in that room during the day, plus having everybody else there who works there, is probably unlikely, however you may have some sort of a community meeting at night. But, at that time, some of the office people, other people have gone home, and what you've got is your, your basic firefighter staff, you know, at, at the building. So, in our code, there's no, there's no parking requirement for this type of use, period. When you look at the ITE book, Transportation Engineers book, there's no parking requirement for a facility of this kind at all. And so, our code has a tendency to kind of mix and match, as well as the parking requirement that they came up with on their sheet, which we went over in detail with them. And, because we calculate some of the parking on square footage, the community room in terms of numbers of capacity, then you end up with the rest of the building, which is the apparatus bays, which, when you, you know, what, what is that? Is that like a warehouse? You know, we just really can't make the equivalencies. So, we basically went over the parking requirements as they described it, including the counts for the living areas, I mean, the rooms, bedrooms for the firefighters that are staying there, how they change shifts, and at build-out. And they came up with, I think, a need for twenty, twenty-eight spaces when they're totally functioning. They basically provide with the existing spaces that they save, a total of thirty spaces. So, that's two more than what they calculate they need. So, we're satisfied with that. So, I just wanted to let, let you know, or just explain a little bit how we dealt with the parking issue. I went through it in a different way and assumed that all the excess square footage was like a warehouse, but it's really not, because you don't have employees running around in a place like this, like you'd have in a warehouse. But, I came up with a count of about a little over thirty spaces for all of the uses that they had, the offices, figure one space per bedroom, because that would be a fellow who's there, who's driven there, and is going to stay overnight, and so on. You can probably count on them having, each of them having a car. And that's the way they calculated it also. So, whichever way you do it, you end up pretty close to each other, so we're satisfied as staff with the number of spaces they have. And that allows for, in the evening, if there is a meeting, a community meeting there, there's a number of spaces in that parking lot to the, to the north, that I think we'll be able to accommodate the people there. And it would, since our coding only requires about ten spaces for that particular facility, they're well within the count on that anyway. The other thing-
Frank, what does that say about the storage of the sheriff vehicles that are there now? Are we including the sheriff vehicles in the count for parking?
Yeah, they're like, they're like, they maintain, you know, office spaces there. If you've got a, if you've got
Yeah, but there's a-
the sheriff's people that are there, they're, they're part of the count.
Yeah, but there's the car that the sheriff's deputy drove in in, and then there's the car that he drives away in that has sheriff written on the side of it, so-
Those vehicles are probably going to be accommodated the same way they're accommodated now. And I don't know, I don't know how many-
How many spaces are they allotted out of this total? Because they've got three, two or three offices.
Yeah, they have, I think, three spaces.
We're, we're actually allowing them five spaces in our count, and the number of employees per use is three. And I believe, like you mentioned, that some come and go, they drive the sheriff's vehicle to and from the, the office. So, yeah, so we have currently three people, we give five spaces, because there's two, two vehicles that stay there, so.
At some point in the future, there may be an opportunity where the sheriff's office is located, just another place in town, and so those spaces would be freed up at that time.
Also, if I may, just a little more detail to the, the note that Fred mentioned. The current operating total that the station needs, that we calculated, is twenty-two spaces. The, the future total, that was mentioned, of twenty-eight, is, is with the additional, with six additional firefighters in the future program as the station becomes fully staffed. So, we, what we've done, is we've looked at a long-term program need for the fire department and provided the parking for that. I mean, we don't know when those six additional firefighters will arrive, but when they do, the parking is, is included for that. So, so right now, we have about, we have about eight more spaces than we need for the current operations.
So, that basically takes the whole, this new expansion basically takes your own capacity for any future bits done.
Correct.
Correct?
Yes.
The, the only other thing I'll say is, is we basically verify their calculations on the height, the height variance, or the amount of, of height that they need over forty feet. And we did that to make sure that we were coming up, and they were coming up with the right numbers for the setback, because the height is related to the setback. And so, all I want to say is that we basically agree with those numbers. So, the variance requests and the, and the distances that are, are there, we verify those. So, that's just sort of a blanket statement about how those, we don't really have any problem with the way those are calculated, so the numbers can stand as they're, as they are on the plan. We did have, we did have the applicant prepare a, a tracking plan. Basically, we're, the vehicles that can enter the existing base have the ability to drive around the building and come in the back door, so that they don't need to back into the street and don't need to back into necessarily those bays, because they can drive through. However, the addition can't do that. And so, that requires then, if, when a vehicle that stays in the new added bays, when it gets to the station, they always want to have it backed in, so when they raise the doors, it's ready to go. So, there would be a couple of, a movement to get that vehicle, in other words, movements on Indiana Street to get it backed then into the station. That occurs only when the emergency vehicles have gone out and then they come back. Then, it would be either from either the south or the north, there would be, have to be a backing movement on Indiana Street in order to get it back into those two bays. Of course, that's very infrequent type of a thing. Probably on the order of average, I think about once a day that that might happen. Obviously, sometimes less than that, some days it may be active, it may be more than that. But, that would be taken care of, there would be personnel from the fire department in the street dealing with track, while those pieces of equipment back into the bays. We went through their lighting plan, and they modified a number of, of things, but we have basically the, some existing lights out there, particularly along Indiana Street, and a few onsite. And, basically, the perimeter limits of zero-point-one-foot candle, candles has been met around the entire site, except for a portion of Indiana Street where there's an existing light, and that throws a little bit more light down onto the street. But, that's an existing light, and so, staff, you know, and basically the town is okay with that because of an existing light. And it was before our light standards were put in place. In the parking areas and in the bay areas, the light that's thrown from the building onto the apron, all of that is within the standards that we have for industrial uses, which is the, and office and industrial uses, which is the segment of the code we chose to apply to this particular use, since we don't really have a separate lighting standard for emergency facilities. In the utilities and drainage part, we did come up with an item that deals with the storm sewer size, and we have a condition added to the motion for approval. That the storm sewer size, we increased to fifteen inches per SMB number one rules and regulations. That, that came up at the last minute.
Question about that, Fred?
Yeah.
If the regulations say fifteen, why have they got a twelve there now? Okay.
Again, my name's Matt Emmons with Drexel Perrell. We designed that line. There's two reasons. If we go to a fifteen-inch pipe, we'd have to use, or it's three reasons, actually. Fifteen-inch pipe, we'd have to use RCP because of the loads that they're spreading out here. The twelve-inch pipe I'm using there is, it's called C-900 Water Line. It's very thick plastic and can handle the loads. The other products just wouldn't, wouldn't stand up to that load. I wouldn't feel comfortable putting my name on it, and I'm going to have to at, at some point. So, we'd like to stick with a smaller pipe, it's hydraulically adequate. The second reason is, on the north end of the building, there is a spider-wed mess of utilities. There's a fiber optic line, water line, sanitary sewer services, electric, cable, and we're trying to snake the line through there. The smaller we can keep that line, the better for us. The third reason is, this line is all onsite, it's all privately maintained, and it won't be the city's maintenance, maintenance issue. I believe the only reason that the city is requesting us to change it to fifteen inches is in case they have to get in there and maintain it, and that happens to be the size of their, their maintenance equipment. This being a private line and onsite, that won't, it won't ever be the city's responsibility, it will always be the fire department's responsibility.
Okay. Now, I guess the question was, if, if the regulations said that it had to be fifteen, why was it ever twelve?
Because of those three reasons. Most importantly, snaking it through the, the utilities up north, the smaller I keep that line, the better. Effectively-
I guess when it was originally built.
Oh, when it was originally built.
Yeah.
The line that's built there now is, is like a twenty-four inch, I think. He's talking about- He's talking about supposed utilities.
The twelve inches padding.
Okay. I, I, okay.
Is this all at the same elevation as all that other stuff?
I'm sorry.
Is this all at the same elevation as the other stuff?
It's all very shallow, though. Gas line's three feet down, fiber optic is two, water line's four and a half, and we're trying to cut through right about the four-foot level.
Okay.
So we're going right to the middle.
And this is really just picking up the surface runoff on the apron of the new apparatus bay, is that right?
It's mostly the apron of the new apparatus bay. It's a very small, it's about half the apron, a little bit of the roofs and some of the landscaping outside, plus it's on the northeast side of the building, the long broad side. There's some area drains there that we're picking up.
But so this doesn't, are we, are you catching, or did you calculate that you're catching any runoff from everything that's above you? Because everything is higher than this point.
A lot of stuff is flowing on the ground. If I can use your street for a moment. This stuff up here is all picked up by an inlet, inlet right there. So everything in the street. The water over here mostly runs off into the street all by itself. As does a lot of the stuff up here. The stuff in the back of the building travels around the, sorry, the travel lane here. We're really only picking up this area right here and this area here in pipes and inlets. The rest of it is surface flow.
But, okay, so I'm sorry, the inlet on the Calmonti cul-de-sac-
Yeah.
-there, is that, is that a storm?
Yes.
An underground storm?
Yeah.
And is that going to the detention pond?
Yeah, well, it actually goes to a large swale that's over here and then eventually does get there. That's also higher than we can get to. We try to use that, but-
Okay, no, that helps me to know that that's there, so.
I think that's the extent of sort of the additional comments I have, at least from my perspective, related to the, to the site plan here. I just want to say that I'm sure this is, this is an amendment to an existing final plan site plan. And so I, one thing I would point out is that the open space requirement for non-residential uses in Rock Creek is twenty percent. And even with the addition of these buildings, the buildings, parts, as well as the bays, they're at about, I believe, what, thirty, thirty-eight percent open space? So the site's not totally matched out here.
I did, I actually had one other question. Construction of the north parking spaces, does that require any regrading of the detention pond at all?
No, it does not. We're able to keep the grade all within the site.
I got a couple of questions, just two. In the discussion of, you know, backing movements of large fire trucks, what's the distance from the stoplight at Colton, that intersection to the new bays?
Well, I don't know. Alex, do you know that?
No.
Did you see that plan that was in here? That showed the backing plan? It wasn't detailed to, all the way to the stoplight on there?
No.
The voters down here in the intersection are talking about it now. I don't, I don't know if we have a message.
Is it fifty feet or five hundred feet? I don't know any of that.
No, fine.
So-
Their backing plan doesn't show it going past the building.
No, no, but the issue is, you know, this is infrequent, but if it happens during the middle of rush hour, are we going to end up with cars stacked up out to Colton Road? That's the question, rush hour being what it is.
Let me, let me talk a little bit also with that, with the backing plan. When we designed the apron on this building, we specifically tried to decrease the number of times the Rock Mountain Fire would have to actually back off of, off of Indiana Street. We've designed this apron so when they're coming in here, they can actually pull a truck onto this apron and we have the diagrams for that as well. And back into these bays if, if they opt or can't for some reason, say somebody's blocking this drive to drive around and park. They can come in and back into these. They can do the opposite for this. If they're coming this direction, they can pull onto the apron and they can back into these bays. So that, that basically determined our landscape island in the middle. So that's an attempt to help alleviate, you know, I would be guessing if I gave it a percentage, but maybe fifty percent of the times they'd have to back in off Indiana.
The intent of the apparatus, the double depth bat, is it, they're relatively small vehicles. They're not large fire trucks, is that the intent?
The larger apparatus we park here-
Right, where they drive through.
-drive through and these will be stacked.
Double tandem or whatever, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So, and the other question that I have pertaining to that is this curve, this curve, is there an issue with sight distance so that some, you know, seventeen-year-old, sixteen-year-old driving around this corner too fast is going to come up on this and not be able to see it and run into him? Because it's up a hill and around a corner, coming from the south. I mean, I know it's a bright red truck with lights and blah, 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 right?
I think it's a reasonable question and all's I can go on is that, you know, all the stuff we do now, and we haven't had in the last ten years any that I know of. And if something bad happens, I always get to know about it.
Sure.
We haven't had any close calls that I know of at all. Our procedures for backing are S O Gs. It's a hard job if you don't do it. We take a person out of the vehicle when we stop and they control the backing action of the truck. So they, you know, it's a spotter to make sure nothing's behind them, looking up the roads, whatever it happens to be, so.
Sure, but spotters are even-
Yeah, and I understand the view, the view shot up. I think, you know, from my perspective of being around here for a while is that there's enough, I know it's downhill too, which is a big, should be a big concern. I just don't see it. It's not a fast, you know, it's not a real fast road. You just come past the school and then the stop sign. And I know it is again downhill, but we just haven't had any, you know. That's all I can tell you on it. I'm not, I'm not traffic engineering or by any means.
If only we had one.
This is a bad place, yeah, I guess that's the point.
It's a bad place to speed. The cops are there.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, it's just, you know, some kid not paying attention. Especially with one of your guys standing in the street. I'm not worried about him hitting the truck. Whatever, you know? I mean, the likelihood is very small that both a drunk adult and one of your people is going to be in the street at the same time, but, you know, if he can't see, it's a problem. So I guess, how far up the road is that picture right there that you have on the screen?
I couldn't give you a distance, but I mean, that, that would be, I'd say maybe fifty to a hundred feet before.
So, so, but you're going to take out twenty-five of that with the new, twenty-five or more with the new construction, right?
Yeah. That's still, the visibility is still, I have a view, I think, of those top. That's-
That's looking up the hill.
Yeah. And that's up above, up above the station.
And we don't go past the debris that's in the building here, so.
Right, and so I guess the, yeah, so if you were backing down this way, if you were backing north of the building, that, it would be more of a problem than backing where you're going to be backing. Because you're mostly around the corner by the time you get to where the bays are.
Yeah, so when we back, so when we back, you know, we're coming this way and staying in that uphill lane and backing in from the station that way.
Yeah.
So it's not the traffic coming down the hill that we're going to have a problem with.
Right, also, yeah. So I just know that that's, it's kind of, it's hard to see around that corner. I run by there a lot, so, so, yeah, anyway, you're past, it looks like, given that, you're past the apex of the corner, so people coming down the hill theoretically would be able to see unless they're drunk or sleeping.
We're texting.
We're texting.
Okay, any other questions?
Doesn't really matter when a guy gets plowed by two tons of metal, man. That's all there is to it.
Any other questions for staff or the applicant this time? Okay. Seeing none, let's see. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to comment on this proposed amendment to the site plan? Fred, you had a question before about the use of the ambulance services or?
George, George.
George, I'm sorry. Okay. I think that's it. With that, I'll close the planning, or the public hearing? Gosh, what a night. And let's see, oh, we didn't actually give you a chance, I guess, for any final comments. We can do that.
Do you need to rebut anything?
Do you rebut anything we've said so far?
Oh, no, no.
It's closed. Okay. Anyone want to start?
I do have a concern on that north elevation. Would like to be, have something to break up that wall with those bedroom windows, bathroom windows. Don't have any great suggestions on how to do it, but it would seem that that is a very visible spot on the building from a lot of traffic going down Colton, coming up Indiana. So would like to see something done to break up that side of the building. And then the other concern I would have would be the tower elevation. I think you explained it well. I know the one in Arbada is very unsightly, so I like the idea that you've tried to do something architecturally to make this one look better.
Which elevation is that you're concerned about?
North elevation.
No, no, I'm sorry, the tower.
Oh, just the height.
Height, okay.
Yeah. I see all your reasoning. I just do have a concern of what, what the neighbors on the upper lots are going to see when they look down. I think, I think you've hidden it well from the street elevation. And I didn't get up there, didn't think about that, to get up there and try and look from a higher elevation and guesstimate what it's going to look like looking down on it. And then I guess in discussing the variances, the front variances are pretty minimal and the back variance, I don't know that it really, not knowing exactly what you have going on behind you as far as the housing goes, doesn't seem like it's a huge distance to have to be that concerned with. Guess that's it.
I kind of concur with a lot of things that Craig just brought up because I would have said the same thing since I initiated the elevation deal. But I have a concern too that I didn't bring up earlier. That is, it appears as though the focus of the main entrance kind of is changing to the north side of the building from the side that was along Indiana. I mean, you're putting that entry there as, I guess, for security reasons. Is that what I'm hearing, for the sheriffs?
You can't answer that now.
Yeah, they have to, they're public care.
Oh, okay.
But the main entrance on the north, the entrance on the north side is mainly for fire personnel.
Okay.
They're going to keep the entrance on the north side and enhance it for security purposes. But that would be public access, that one on the east side.
Yeah, right.
Right now, on the existing station, there's a, there's a north side entrance and an east side entrance. And so they're adding a third entrance on the north side for fire people.
Right. And it would appear like they're-
And they're adding a vestibule.
And they're adding a vestibule on the east side.
And it looks like they're enhancing the existing north side entrance to make it a more focal entrance. No?
No, I-
It's not, the north entrance, as far as I know, is not really a public entrance. The public entrance is the east side.
I'm talking about the reconfiguration of the interior space, it would look like.
I didn't, I didn't see that.
We can pull up the floor plan if you want. We can look at it.
Got to bring that up when I was looking at it.
Sorry, I mean, there's no reason we can't look at it.
Yeah, we can put the pictures up. We just can't-
You just can't provide additional testimony about it, so.
So do you want to see the outside or the inside of the building?
No, I'm looking at it right now, it's fine. I just, I like to see, if it's not really the primary entrance, then it's probably not objectionable to, to see it in the present form it was shown on the elevations.
That entrance right there is primary for the cops. This entrance right here is now primary for the firefighters and the public mostly, except they, you know, they can come in the bay doors as well. This entrance right here is going to be for the firefighters going to the living quarters.
Right.
Right? But so if you were to approach the fire station on a given day, your most likely choice would be here. So there's not much change happening. This isn't, this isn't new. You know, you still enter the door and go up the steps. And this one is still just like that. They're just adding this vestibule here.
All right.
They may be enhancing the landscaping outside around it or something. But what was the point, though, that you wanted to make?
Well, I just, it appeared like it's almost changing the focus from one entry. I agree, I've always entered on the Indiana side, but it almost looked like they're trying to enhance that north side existing elevation to make it like a new entry, especially with the reconfiguration of space. Maybe not now I'm looking at it.
I think it was more a function of trying to hide the wall here with landscaping here.
Okay.
It's a joke.
Yeah, got it. Tom, anything else?
Otherwise, I like the plan. I'm concerned about those things that you just brought up.
Anything?
I have no particular comments. I think it's a thoughtful plan for expansion. I think that even though they're asking for a height variance, it's over a minimal area and it, and it, there is a purpose to that height, which I thought was very thoughtful, you know, trying to be representational of the large apartment complex that we have in town and being able to train to those situations. So I think that's a good justification. And yeah, if you could somehow break up the look of it with, who knows, faux overhangs or something, that might, that might be helpful, but I think it's a thoughtful expansion.
Comments?
So maybe some geraniums on the, on the tower. Deck area.
Like Romeo and Juliet.
Hang some flower boxes.
It'll be more, it'll be more like the railings at the horizons anyway. So on the, wow, it fell right out of my head. I think I have Alzheimer's. I'm on the wrong planning commission and I have Alzheimer's. It's bad. The north wall is definitely problematic. So I don't know that it's worth denying the project, but it needs to be fixed. So, you know, maybe a nice awning in puce or something over the, something to break up the expanse of the wall or maybe just make, give it a, give it a, you could give it like a yacht appearance by making glass along the whole thing, sort of, or maybe portholes, you know, throwback to the steamship days, kind of. I don't have too, I don't have a problem with the, with the tower. I mean, it's a, we already said there's going to be a fire station here a long time ago and I'm pretty sure that even the people who live right up the street from it, it's probably, you know, at the most, ten houses whose view is affected in some way or another. And I'm pretty sure the twelve seconds they are away from the fire station will make them happy to, you know.
I think that might be high enough actually to see-
I think mostly they are, yeah.
I just didn't really consider that.
I think it is. I think probably by the time you get to their decks, they're probably thirty, thirty-eight feet above the street level anyway. Pretty sure. They're at least, they're at least twenty-eight feet above the street level, so. So I don't think that's too much of a problem. I'm concerned that we're, we're under parking if we're going to use this thing as a community space. I don't think that forty people showing up, given the way, you know, if forty people are actually going to show up for a meeting at that place, you're going to have probably at least twenty extra cars. at least 20 extra cars, and more like 30.
Is street parking allowed on Indiana?
No.
I know they have, when they had like swim, swim team events there and different things, the street would get loaded with cars.
Yeah, but that's not, it's narrower there than it is up at.
No, I mean, swim team events, they used to like hand out gear and have special, use the.
Oh, at the fire station.
At the fire station, and cars used to line the street.
Yeah, it's not good.
They'll have to do that at the pool now.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they do that now. So, but that's really all I have to, and then whatever it was that I don't remember.
Maybe it will come to you. Happy to come back to you. Clint?
I would echo the concerns about parking. If anything, it's, it's under. I think, having been with the sheriff's office, they have a lot of vehicles that stay there, and then all the employees come in. I've been there for a couple of kid birthday parties, and everybody's parking on Indiana for those, that's, that's a concern. So I'm glad to see the new parking lot. I think for the most part that will take care of it, but if anything, they could probably use more. And I agree about the north elevation, could use some improvements, but otherwise I think my concerns have been addressed.
Ah, there it is.
The address.
I'll wait.
Oh, go ahead. So you don't forget again?
No, I won't forget again. It's locked in now, baby.
One of the things I wanted to say was in the report, it says that the Rock Creek plan allows a 40-foot height on that tower. And so we're only asking for 2.92 feet above that. They can go 40, so I don't have a concern with that. I think less than three feet from a distance, nobody's going to see it. So, and otherwise, I like the plan, and I don't have any other questions or issues.
So, we're making new construction now on an existing building. We're in superior but under the guidelines of the Rock Creek FDP, so the whole 300-foot setback from disparate uses doesn't come into play, right? Because as it stands now, there's supposed to be 300 feet between the new building on the fire station and whatever buildings are in Calmonte.
Yeah.
In the town's code.
You have existing, correct. So in the Rock Creek rash, we, it does not specify that difference in use requirement.
Okay, good. So that we don't need another variance?
Correct.
Lucky us.
Okay, any other comments? If there's no further comment, I would entertain a motion.
And then we had two conditions in our staffing board. One was minor technical redline corrections.
Saw that.
And then the second one was with regard to 15-inch storm sewer, and that's up to the planning commission on whether you'd like to keep that in or delete it, and then any other conditions that you'd like to include.
So then you had one that you wanted to, or might have thought about, which was something or other?
Yeah, I wrote down the modeling, the height from the neighbors adjacent, but it doesn't seem to be as much of a concern for the commission, so I'm not as concerned about it. I think the board of adjustments can make that decision if they, if they would like to, to decide. They think that, that, you know, the variance of three, almost three feet is an issue for them.
So does anybody care about the storm sewer size? In the amount of.
No, if he's going to put his name on it, then that's good enough for me.
What's the difference in flow between 15 inches and 12 inches?
Can't ask, can't ask, can't answer.
Oh, sorry, don't, never mind. I'll ask you later. You know, I want to forget.
Okay.
Yes, so does the commission want to, you're asking, does the commission want to adopt this?
Yeah, are you interested in the, I was going to talk about the model height, is there any interest in recommending that to the board? As part of our, as far as our resolution?
I don't think it's necessary.
Okay, and then the storm sewer? No?
No.
I don't see that.
The north side architectural?
Yes.
Yes, okay, not so? Okay. I guess, my only comment maybe related to that was just that, that could potentially be addressed by landscaping? No?
No.
You don't think so?
Yeah, and you don't have enough space on that plan or you carry anything that's going to cover that massive wall.
Ivy towers.
I'm aligned with that. I didn't know if even some type of fascia, fascia going across it.
How much stucco is in the Bureau of the History of Firefighting through the ages?
Well, maybe, maybe just.
By the third grade class at Superior Elementary.
Maybe just integrating that secondary stairwell thing, it just, it makes it look like it's a change in emphasis of the.
I don't see, I see there's a lot of mass there, I see what you're talking about, it doesn't really bother me that much. I think it's far enough set off the street off of Colton with the detention pond and everything. I think from a scale standpoint, I just, I think it's broken up enough with the two, the doors, the stairs, the, you know, the, the windows, it's not just a big wall, you know? So, to me, it doesn't, it doesn't bother me as much, but we can make the recommendation, it can go to the hands of the architect, and they can do their magic on it and see what they think. But I'm, I'm happy to, you know, we could definitely include it if you guys want to include it, so, just my opinion on it.
Mm-huh.
Okay?
Mm-huh.
All right, so I move that we approve Resolution Number PC-1, Series 2010, a resolution of the Town of Superior approving the final plat site plan.
No, this one.
The resolution of the Planning Commission of the Town of Superior approving an amendment to the final plat site plan for Rocky Mountain Fire Protection District in Case Number RCRFSP 2009-2 with the following conditions. One, make minor technical and redline corrections to plans as identified by staff, and two.
Address the north side.
Address the massing of the north.
The north side facade?
Yeah. Facade.
Elevation.
Elevation.
Second. So that's a motion by McInnis and a second by Prestesator. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? All opposed? unanimous? Okay, motion is approved. Item, that concludes item five. Thank you, everyone, good job. Item six, staff announcements miscellaneous?
Just the, just the one I have. So right now we are anticipating guardian storage, final development plan we come forward at the next meeting. This may cause us to delay for another meeting, the Chapter 16 discussion, I know, but we're, we're going to try to get both ready for the meeting, but just to let you know we might have a slight delay. Again. That's it.
Anyone else? Anything? Anything? Okay, that's it. Thank you. Good journey.